For the invocation, please.
Heavenly Father, we are here this morning with kind of sad hearts. We've lost a dedicated former employer E of Cameron County, longtime Francis Domansky, and Dwayne Tyner, early this morning from Valley Trucking Company. Lord, I pray that you find a divine area in your castles up there in heaven for both of these. Dwayne has helped me bring in 50 to 60 trailer loads of food, clothing, many different things for the people of Cameron County. Francis just had her house redone, but Lord, I know that she's much happier with you. She doesn't have to use a cane or a crutch. So, Lord, I just dedicate this prayer and this time this morning to these two beautiful people, a dear brother and a dear sister. Lord, we pray for our Cameron County Court. We pray for wisdom and safety and everything they touch, and today's agenda particularly. We pray for all grants that are written to help Cameron County. We pray for our health department, our sheriff's departments, for direction. We pray your mercies for the employees of Cameron County and the health of those employees and their families while they're on vacation, traveling. And I pray, Lord, that their vehicles, if they travel in any vehicle outside of Cameron County, will be surrounded by angels. Finally, Lord, we pray for your divine peace for all residents of Cameron County. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to pray for Mr. Ibarra to win his family.
Mr. Ibarra.
Mr. Ibarra, lifetime, well, I don't know if he was a lifetime owner, but longtime residence of Brownsville with, he was the owner of Ibarra's tires from Roosevelt and Fourteenth. Pass the way. Thank you.
I pray to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. How are you today? This is the Commissioner's Special Meeting, Commissioner's Court Special Meeting, set for Tuesday, the 21st day of June 2005 at 10:30 a.m., approximately 10:35. First item on the agenda is public comments. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Any comments from the Commissioners? Okay, I was asked to go into executive session. Mr. Trey Martinez, on item, let me see. Confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel, item 24A, confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus Faulkner, formerly known, Faulkner USA formerly known as Landmark pursuant to ETC government code section 551.071. And B, I believe that, right?
Yes.
B, confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues regarding the Cameron County Detention Center and the Cameron County Sheriff's Administration Building pursuant to ETC government code section 551.071. And we'll be back.
Very familiar, the executive session.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll be back in about two or three hours. God said second by Commissioner Wood. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. We will go into the presentation on the status of the county legislative agenda.
I want to go ahead and take care of the executive session.
You want to do this?
It's clear that you do it that way.
We'll go to the first item on the executive session. Confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus Faulkner USA formerly known as Landmark pursuant to ETC government code section 551.071.
Judge Protam, I believe the court was anticipating a motion to approve settlement with Bell with Metro Electric along the terms and conditions to set forth an executive session.
I make that motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garza.
No, we didn't second it. We had a brief discussion.
Second by, I guess, you were here, I'm sorry. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item B on our executive session, 24B.
Just acknowledge the report of counsel.
Go ahead. I haven't, I was not in.
Okay. Confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues regarding the Cameron County Detention Center and the Cameron County Sheriff's Administration Building pursuant to ETC government code section 551.071.
Acknowledge the report of counsel.
There's a motion by Commissioner Garza, second that.
No.
Me.
I'm sorry, by Commissioner Wood. I couldn't look at the chat. Commissioner Wood, second by myself. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item C, confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning solid waste disposal in Cameron County on which the duties of the authority of the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state's bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Opens Minus Act pursuant to ETC government code section 551.071. What, how do we word that?
To proceed, as discussed in the executive session with.
Did you, did you want counsel to negotiate with outside counsel concerning further representation on that?
Yes, and I was there for that discussion, a nice little move.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Wood. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, 24D, deliberation regarding the properties concerning the possible assignment of dolphin dough, oyster bar concession pursuant to ETC government code section 551.072.
Now this report of Director of Parks Department.
There's a motion to acknowledge the report of our Director of Parks.
Did the court want to direct the Parks Director to do due diligence in background check on the potential assignee?
Yes, I'd like to include that.
There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by myself. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
The ayes have it.
E, 24E, confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning the concession agreement with Brady's duty freed at the Free Trade Bridge at Los Tomates pursuant to ETC government code section 551.072.
Los Indios.
Los Indios, say, I said tomatoes?
Yeah.
I ate too many tomatoes yesterday. Los Indios, okay.
I'm going to authorize Legal Counsel to draft an amended agreement.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by myself. Those in favor say aye.
Just one question.
We need to have to bring that back to us for review.
Okay.
We're going to be back.
Okay.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Just about my extension on all those executive session items. I was at the Lower River Valley Development Council Solid Waste Planning Committee to request that the committee issue a vote of, that the Consolidated Waste Industries proposal for landfill in Los Fresnos was in nonconformity with the regional solid waste plan developed by the Lower River Valley Development Council. And the committee voted to make a recommendation to the Lower River Valley Development Council that the plan by Consolidated Industries, that they call Lower Valley, got a new name, is in nonconformity with the regional plan for solid waste disposal in Cameron County. So, that was a good, good thing, and we had a lot of residents from the, Commissioner Garza was there as well in attendance with me, and we note that it's a good first step in the direction of, of, not first step, multiple step in the direction of stopping this landfill that these people are proposing in a community. So, that's why I was not here.
I'll abstain on A, B, D, and E. I walked in when the discussion was going on, and C, and I did vote on that.
We've done a public comment, and we're on number two.
Okay, can I return just a second to public comment? Judge Salazar is here today, and she didn't give us a card, but she did want to say some things that I, obviously, anytime she has to talk to us, we would love to hear from her.
Thank you.
She does an outstanding job. We have a JP, working very hard. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
That's right.
I wanted to come early, but I had court. But I want to bring in an invitation for a good job that you all have done for me in this office. I'm going to have an inauguration of my new office tomorrow, and I'd like to, really, let me, let me read what it says, like that you, you know what I'm talking about. I want you to come celebrate with us. You are welcome to join Judge Linda Salazar and my staff for our office inauguration this 22nd day of June 2005 at 10 a.m. By the virtues of the authority vested, I, we duly thank all for your help and hard work. And I wanted to thank you all because my office has been remodeled, never been done in 20 years. And I'm bringing a special invitation to the county judge, the Honorable Judge David Garza, the Honorable Eneta Mayo, the Honorable John Wood, the Honorable Judge Pete Benavides. Mr. Wood, yours is being delivered as I speak right now. Especially, I'd like to thank Mr. Marcelino, Marcelino Ibarra. I have this special invitation here. I am proud of maintenance. We have a great maintenance department here. And this is Edna and her staff. I'm hoping that you all can come by my office so you can see the great job that our maintenance department has done for us. I mean, we have the best. I am very happy with that. And this is something I do appreciate that I did, that we're doing. We're going to have a cake that I ordered and some tamalesitos. And I hope you all can come see the job that everyone's done, the maintenance computer system. I'm very happy, really. I mean, I'm excited, and not only with the tomatoes, they've been working very hard with them, with EPS. Thank you, gentlemen. And everyone that has helped us in this new remodel of the office. You should be having an invitation, I think you already have it in your office over there. And I'm inviting everybody from the courthouse, believe it, because they've been asking me, man, Judge, your office looks so different. And I said, you know what, I'm going to do something. And, and this is why I'm doing it, because everybody want to see the new office of the new JP, and, and that's why I'm here. But thank you, Marcelino. I will hand over your invitation, especially to me, to you, for your job, for such a job, really. Thank you. I'm hoping that all the staff will be there. I want all the maintenance to be there and come and just a little, take a little appreciation that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hold on. Linda, I think you want to say something.
No, no, no. I wanted to say something to Marcelino.
Okay, well, let me say something to Linda first.
Okay.
Judge Salazar.
Thank you.
When you were saying you were going to open up a new office, I wasn't sure what office you're going to open up. She has an office in the courthouse, she has an office that she works out of at the Los Tomates Bridge. She works out of this courtroom. I think she has a night court or.
I do have my night court, yes. I have those on Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
From 5 to 7. It's working fantastic. It's great. The teachers are excited, the kids are excited, the parents here in Brownsville. I've heard so many good comments on that.
So, she's everywhere and doing things that we've never seen done before, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, now you can.
With your permission, Judge, I just wanted to ask Marcelino, since he was here, I've been trying to remember for about two years now that we need a fan in the executive room, okay? You know, it could be a wall fan, please, because, you know, there's real stuff in there, you know? It's only, it's only room for.
A lot of hot air in there, is what I see.
No, no, Marcelino, I mean, he, I mean, their office is really mint. I mean, they did workstations and, and my God, you know.
Let's just get wall units, you know? And if everyone was my size, we wouldn't fit, okay? But thank God that we're not.
No, but I'm glad we have them. They're doing a great job, and like I said, once you see my office, you're going to see, wow. So, I hope y'all can come and.
Will be there.
Thank you.
Be there. Thank you, Judge.
Judge, this pointed out to me apparently through the decision to abstain from voting, that two of you on the executive session items abstained from a vote, and there being a quorum of four, two votes do not get action. So, either we're going to have to put items A, B, C, D, and E back on.
And abstention is not a no vote.
Well, it can be treated either as a no vote or no vote at all.
Okay, well, I mean.
If that's the case, you know, I'll be more than happy to redo them, and I'll walk out. And you have three here, and then you'll have a majority.
Does that work?
You have a quorum of three, so you could do that.
Why don't we revisit?
You know, the other thing I would say is the fact that you weren't present for the.
The only problem is I would like to vote on the one I was here present.
Well, we've already voted on that one.
Oh, C. C is already done. That's okay.
That's good. That's a good, so that's something we can.
A, B, D, E. I think so. The, the other thing, the other thing I would say to you is the fact that you weren't or did not participate in the discussion during executive session does not prevent you from taking action in open meeting, because that's where the action is taken.
Well, I know that, and I know that, and the only reason I voted to abstain is because I was, I was focused on this whole thing that we did this morning with the Lower River Valley Development Council, and I don't, I didn't feel I had enough information to be able to pick a position, their names, and any of these issues, and that's why I abstained. Not because, I didn't abstain because I wasn't in there. I abstained because I didn't have enough, I didn't have enough information on them, and I didn't want to make a vote on that, that's why. Okay? So, you want to make your motion again?
On which items?
A, B, D, and E.
A, B, D, and E.
Okay, you want me to read the whole thing?
No, just say, just.
24A.
Just ask for, let me just take up items 24, 25A, B.
25A, I'm sorry.
25A, B.
D and C.
D and C.
D and C, yes.
You can make the same motion that was originally made, just ask that, based on a quorum of, of three people now, the vote would be a motion, a second, and along the same terms and conditions as originally set forth.
A, B, D, and E.
Yes, A, B, D, and E. With the motions that were previously done, I guess, you know, on this one, except for the, let me see.
Well, C is already approved.
Yes, I know. That's why we're doing 25A, B, D.
Yeah. And do 24C again. I can vote on that one because I was.
It's already done. It's passed.
All right. I'll change my voting seat to aye.
Okay, well.
I think the committee. Because I was, I was a party to that.
Okay, A was to authorize settlement Metro Electric, right?
Yes, along the terms and conditions.
B was to authorize report, you know? C was to.
D.
D. D was to acknowledge report also.
Director and to pursue financial information on the potential, let's see.
And E was to authorize also, right? Authorize.
The drafting of an amended agreement. And it's coming back to us for approval.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
And I abstain.
He made it a second.
Okay.
Now, Judge, did you, did you want to take up C again with Commissioner Garza present?
Yeah, let's take it up, because I, even though I disagree with the legal opinion.
25C, yeah. Back to the floor, which is item 25C, confir with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning solid waste disposal in Cameron County on which the duty of turning to the professional body of the state disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clarity conflicts, the Open Meetings Act. So, the motion is what, on that again?
On C? Are we doing C again?
Yeah. I want to, I want to vote for it since I did participate in that discussion.
Okay, good.
What is the motion on C?
The motion was to go ahead and proceed negotiations with Paul Gosling and expert witnesses that we might need, and proceed in that direction.
Okay, and that was a motion made by.
By me?
Second by Commissioner Wood. For the discussion, although, I abstained. I abstained. So, I didn't participate. Commissioner Tamayo was in the meeting the whole time, but I believe she left because of Francis's.
No, she had a presentation on the.
She had a presentation. I know that she's been very involved, and Francis passed away. We did talk about that, by the way, that y'all did, that Francis Domansky would work for me since January 1, 1985. And then, the time I was a county court law judge and a deputy judge, and then she came back to work for me about seven years ago, and she passed away yesterday. And I know that, talked about her, but I want to say a few words, because I probably knew her better than anybody else. There wasn't a woman, there wasn't a person that I knew that did so much for the community that Francis did. Francis spent all her waking hours helping people out. She would be there giving out food, she would be there taking people to the doctor, to the social security office, to the courthouse, to, when people had kids in jail, she'd take them there. She was, her life really, she really didn't have her own life. Her life was the community, and she spent all her time helping the community. She did this all, all the life that she lived, and no one knows how old Francis was. But we know that, that she gave so much more than in this life that she took in. She has a really special place in heaven, and I'm thankful that she was our friend, our, our employee, our community leader, our Democrat. And she, she was an FDEC person for at least eight to 10 years, representative, she was a precinct chairman for the Democratic Party, Precinct 17, for 50 years, something like that. She took care of the park there, made sure. I was on the phone with Francis at least twice a week, and most of the time when I was on the phone with her, it was to, to, a call by her telling me that one light or another was off at the park, or that the swimming pool wasn't open yet, or that they needed to repair this or that, or that they were having a fundraiser at the church for a family here or there, and asking for a contribution. You know, just, Francis was just always, always worried about other people and their needs, and so she will be very much missed, but long, long remembered. I don't know when her funeral services are. You're listening to this on a Thursday night. She probably has already been buried next to her mother, who was also a community leader for many, many, many years in that community. Her mother's name was Machita Domansky, and her name sits on the pool that's there. And I just want y'all to pray for her, and to pray for yourself that she is looking out for you where she's at today, sitting next to Jesus Christ, so, because she got a lot of stroke up there, folks. She earned it, and if she's working for you, it's going to be good for you. Okay?
Judge, may I say something real quick?
Yeah.
Because it's a true story. After, being elected four years afterward, I was sitting with her, and she said to me, do you know that I was madrina de lazo for your mother and father? I said, how come you've been four years I've been here and you have never told me? She said, well, you never asked me. If I knew your parents, you know? She was madrina de lazo for my mother and father. Apparently, los lazos se rompieron, pero.
I would make, I would like to make a comment, you know, Francis, because she, she was a pretty special lady in Loria El Rio. She liked to be referred to. And Loria El Rio was not only El Antito, it was a whole river, you know, and for her she was concerned. I had the opportunity to, to meet her in 1980, and she would truck people into my pharmacy and always tried to help somebody. She was always trying to do that, you know, it was, and then she would always help, you know? When campaigns came along, she was ready to help, you know? That was her way of saying, you know, I'm helping you. And she was very instrumental in, in all my races that I won and lost in San Benito, you know, in either helping or not helping, and the one she didn't help, I lost, I must say, you know? So, you know, but she, she, she had ties because of family, she had ties because of friendship, and in that order, you know, she supported people, whether, you know, you agreed with her or not, she always respected your opinion.
And she was tough also.
Oh, she was a tough lady. She was a tough lady.
Because I remember calling, I said, can you connect me to the Department of San Benito? Why don't you write the numbers down? I was calling every five minutes.
That's when she was at the judge's office.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, she, she.
It's tough.
But she was a good lady, always helping others. That's, that's how I will remember her, and up till last week, you know, I visited with her, and, and she, she had been getting concerned about her health, very much so. She, she just didn't feel well and was tired, so it's a blessing for her, it's just a big loss for the family, because a lot of people there depended, and I mean her extended family, depended on her. The community depended on her. It didn't matter if it was free commodities from the food pantry, or Toys for Tots during the Christmas time, you know, whatever, she was there in the midst of it. So, you know, our prayers are with the family now.
And this was a lady, by the way, that when Governor White would be in town, he would go by and see her. When Commissioner John Sharp was in town, he would go by and see her. You know, when Attorney General Jim Maddox was in town, he would go by and see her. I mean, she had major ties to some elected officials at the highest levels of government. There's a picture in my office, was a bunch of people sitting next to Bill Clinton, and I believe Francis is in that picture, you know? So, I just, you know, she, she, she was well-known all across the state of Texas, a wonderful woman. She will.
Perhaps she treated me differently, Pete, because whenever I asked for something or wanted something, she was always there to help me and provide it for me, take care of whatever I need.
I'll tell you maybe.
And that's the way I saw her, and I think the rest of the community did too.
Well, all I know is that in that picture that you're talking about, you have my predecessor there too. I just want you to know that. He's in there too.
You were invited, but you were with the other guy. Okay, and we also lost this week Manuel Ibarra, who was also a big community organizer, I think. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know you had. Okay, that's it. Number two presentation on the status of the county legislative agenda during the 1979, the 79th legislative session.
Judge, I passed around the memo before the meeting, and the, essentially, the first two items on the memorandum speak to 3485, which was filed by Representative Oliva de the Establishment of Criminal Hearing Officers, was signed by the, by the governor last Friday. Also, Senate Bill 15 by Senator Lucio, which changed the building location for the replacement facility at South Texas Hospital System from Harlingen to Cameron County in general. That bill will take effect on August 29, 2005. Ms. Dela Fuente, as is reflected on the agenda, is on her way to Austin right now for the special session that was called. I've included a copy of the proclamation from the governor's office indicating what the scope of it is going to be. The one thing I'd like to mention is that while he doesn't specifically mention the consideration of appraisal revenue caps, I'm sorry, property caps, that it still could be germane and ultimately brought up during, during the session.
I think he touches on that, what I read on my email, let's see if I can find it in here. Consider legislation for local property tax rate compression and voter approval of local property tax rates. I think that's what he's talking about in that item.
Well.
Well, um, we need to be very vigilant on that issue and work to make sure that that is not part of the legislation out there, which would be disastrous for, uh, county governments all across the state of Texas. Tax, taxation of counties is strongly opposed to the caps. I spoke to a representative yesterday, and he thought that the caps didn't apply to counties, it only applied to school districts. I mean, that's how misinformed some people are right now about, about that, that issue. And so in my opinion, we, we really need to stay on top of folks on that issue. I, I want to point something out, though, on our bill, the, uh, uh, the criminal hearing officer bill, there was an editorial written by the Herald, uh, same day that they both that wrote the article that, that y'all raised your eyebrows during the meeting, uh, about our trip to Washington, which it wasn't even discussed during the meeting. On that same day, an editorial was written by the Brownlow Herald, says, "Ne modo legislation takes steps to ensure appointment, not just a political favor." And if you read this editorial, it suggests that, um, the Texas Legislature passed, um, HP 3485 in order to prevent county judges like me from appointing JPs like Judge Torres to, uh, sit as temporary, um, uh, magistrates at, in positions like at the county jail, and that they drafted it to kind of rein us in. What, and this is really misleading, we drafted that bill in my office. In my office, we're the ones that recommended in the drafting, we put in that the appointment should be made by, um, the district judges, not by the commissioner's court, or not by the county judge. Um, the, the, the language in the bill that was passed out of the House, this, this thing also says, it's, and suggest, it, it suggests to you, if you read this article, that Representative Oliva, uh, drafted the bill in order to prevent us from making the appointments when we, in fact, drafted the language in the bill and gave it, uh, to Representative Oliva to file. We use the language that allowed the, the district and county court law judges to make the appointment. And then in this article, it suggests that somehow Senator Lucio required that justices of peace, it doesn't suggest, it states, required that justices of peace be, that, I mean, the hearing officer be a lawyer. In fact, the bill that was filed by Representative Oliva and by Senator Lucio did not require that it be a lawyer. The bill that passed out of the House specifically said that the hearing officer is to be, um, a, can be a retired JP. Uh, and the bill filed by Senator Lucio and passed out of the Senate, uh, Committee, um, also stated that it was not going to be a lawyer. It was amended on the floor at the specific request of Senator Whitworth, uh, and contrary to the wishes of Senator Lucio, that it required the hearing officer be a lawyer. In other words, Senator Lucio was opposed to the lawyer requirement in the bill, and in fact argued against it. Um, well, he was opposed to the lawyer requirement that Senator Whitworth wanted and argued against it, but was not successful in convincing Senator Whitworth. This art, this editorial is just absolutely wrong and misleading. Uh, um, the, the, the legislation as it passed requires attorneys with, uh, four years of experience, um, and there's a, uh, there's also an editorial here that says that the Brownlow Herald is recommending that all JPs in the future be lawyers, and I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we take the position that that's, we, I don't agree with that, and I think that justices of peace is don't need to be lawyers, uh, they've never been lawyers. We've had justices, we, we have one lawyer right now, Justice of Peace, and I promise you, the other justices of peace are doing just as good of a job, are justice qualified to be able to do the job that, that the lawyer does in these positions, and if that issue comes up, because I understand, uh, there is a move in the legislature to try to make JPs lawyers, then we ought to take a stand against that position, um, very firmly. So, I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing, in the same, uh, article that was mentioned, that incorrectly states that eyebrows were raised about my trip to Washington DC, I got a phone call yesterday from, uh, Pat Younger, uh, and just one of the things that we had got to talk to on the trip to Washington DC was the funding, uh, continuing funding for the straightening of the, uh, intercoastal waterway. Uh, Commissioner Wood and I went to that meeting, and I received, uh, a, uh, phone call yesterday, and also a listing of, of, uh, of projects that were funded through the committee recommendation, and the GIWW Port Isabel project for the straightening of the intercoastal canal was recommended for funding to the tune of $700,000. That's just one out of about eight or nine, eight, eight pieces of, of legislation that we went to, to Washington DC on. The other ones, we haven't heard on yet, but it was, and even if just that one, uh, gets approved, it was a very successful trip. Okay?
Judge, also, she, uh, Ms. La Fuente asked me to let the court know that she'll be hoping to make a presentation in the first week of July on the status of the reigning, uh, county legislative agenda, the bills that, uh, got caught in committee or were ultimately not referred to a committee, thanks to that.
Or vetoed?
Or left pending or vetoed.
Okay, that would be nice.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to acknowledge the status of the county legislative agenda? Uh, motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by I, I. I oppose, motion carries. Three, presentation and possible action on the status of the Harlingen Annex Building, Port Isabel Annex Building, Levi Building, years for maintenance facility, Social Services Building, and Dancy Building.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. We've got two of the project architects, uh, that are working on the different projects, and so what I'd like to do is, uh, start off with the Harlingen Annex, um, building. Carolyn James and Juan Mujica are here to give an update on that project.
Good morning, afternoon, how are we doing?
Pete, you ordering lunch?
No.
No?
Okay. I can stay awake.
No, the problem is not that, it's that, that after a little while, nobody's going to hear each other talk because of the rumbling of...
That's fantastic.
Um, that's Pete, uh, you look, that's my, um, my name is Juan Mujica, I'm with the Harlingen Office, and Carolyn James, ladies of the Harlingen Office, our Court's Office, and we'll be talking to you briefly, just give you a status report on the Harlingen Annex Building, and, uh...
Do you have a copy for the court?
Okay. Um, we'll talk to you briefly about the status of the project, the layout, and then I'll briefly talk to you about, uh, an issue of cost for the building, so, let's get our ball started.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner.
Before you do that, can I just inquire to make sure that, that we, we're clear on this, has all the people that are going to be located in this facility been consulted, including the JPs and the constables and the different elected officials, as to what you're proposing to us today?
Yes, we have, we've had numerous meetings with the various departments, and of course, this is a preliminary design, and we will continue to meet with these departments to ensure that we meet all of their needs as we move forward, and that we refine the building to be everything that they need, so, um...
I agree with that.
It's a continuing process, and we have begun the process and have, uh, met with them, and we will continue to meet with them, because we certainly want what is the end product to meet the needs of the county and all the county offices. Um, today, what...
Hey, my name is Judge, sorry. My name is Juan Lucio, and I'm the sheriff, and I'm here to tell you that we have not met with these people. I have not seen the project in its total completion right here, and the times that we have been notified, it's been just one day before, and we're busy somewhere else, Judge, and certainly I won't mind meeting with them, but I just want you to let the court to know that we haven't met with these people.
Okay, well, why don't we just hear out the plan and then see how you feel about it, and then if we need to come back and do some modifications?
Judge, um, I think it's, it should point it out that this presentation was at the request of the court, uh, the committee that was reviewing the, the layout as it exists today, it's not completed, there were still some additional meetings that needed to occur before it was brought to the court, for the considerations, I think the sheriff is of the impression...
That this is the final review?
Right, yeah, that this is just, the commissioners asked for a status, and so that's why they're...
I think it needs to be pointed out that, uh, you started working on this project about maybe two years ago?
At the very least. At the very least.
A lot of the meetings that occurred in regards to space allocation, space requirements, the needs that each department had, occurred and were planned for from about two years ago, and, and that's how you come with this conceptual...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think that needs to be said, you know, because in all fairness to y'all, because there's been numerous meetings that have occurred over the last two years.
And everybody gets invited, and I think, you know, part of the problem is that we have a new sheriff, and we really need to get him much more involved. Actually, though, if you look at what's being proposed for the Sheriff's Department component, it's pretty good, so...
Well, we, we have met, um, in a preliminary forum with you, in, in your office, and, um, we're certainly not finished, and we certainly intend to continue to meet with you, and, uh, we want everyone to be satisfied with the end product.
When I say that we haven't met with you lately, okay, what we met is about three, four months back, okay? We had a discussion. You were supposed to come back or talk to us, and whenever we get any information from you, it's at the very last minute. Maybe you're busy, whatever the case may be, but certainly we'd like to be informed, and certainly we'd like to meet with you at any time, okay? But we do need at least a week or so, uh, time in advance, because we do have other commitments.
Absolutely. Uh, just, just for information, Mr. Lucio, the plan that we're presenting them is the exact plan that we met with you. We have not made any modifications or changes to this, we met with you, so what we present to them is just the status and, and where we are, and what we'd like to proceed, we'd like to get to agreement, so we can proceed. But certainly, just like we do with every department, once we, we have all progress towards, whoever the commission board wants to meet, we'll, we'll proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, all that being said, please be assured, we're committed to, to give you a quality product that meets your needs. We, we have a few handouts here that represent the work that we've done today. We, we have worked on this project over an extended period of time, and, um, we have developed several programs that were in response to the department's needs, the budget at the time, and, um, through various, uh, processes, we've come down to this space program, which is our final one that we have developed at this time, and it includes the comments from the departments, from when we've talked in the past and when we've talked more recently. It also includes some, uh, growth for each department and some general growth for the building, and, as you can see, we have each department listed and their needs with their assigned square footage, and the total for this is, uh, 13,735 square feet, so it's an approximately 14,000 square foot building for just roundabout sake. Uh, what we have done from a floor plan standpoint, which you have an eight and a half by 11 there following the program, this sheet, and is also reflective on this floor, we have, however, reflects a different department, with blue being the shared facilities. We have tried to make the building as flexible and have as many flexible shared spaces as possible, so that, um, each department would have the use not only within their own department, but also so meeting rooms and other facilities within the building. Uh, we have arrayed each department around a public lobby, excuse me, which we also see as a good opportunity to maybe incorporate some public art and maybe something that's reflective of the community and, uh, instill a civic pride. We have a community, a really nice building, and a great place to come and see their public officials work. Uh, each department has their own entrance, they have a, um, it's not a giant waiting space within their department, but they do have space within the department for waiting for each, um, type of citizen activity that happens there. The tax office has a large milling space so that they can stack people in the rows to go to the tax offices or the tax clerks. Each, the other departments have smaller waiting areas, and then that, for overflow, we have the large lobby. The courtroom is centrally located, and it has a security access for the public, and in the back of the building, we have a circulation path so that departments can, um, go to the shared facilities, enter the building, without going through the public area. So we are separating the entrance from the public from the employee and staff entrances, so that there's more security within the building for everyone that works there. Uh, the, these blue facilities here, we have a joint break training facility that can be divided, or it can be one large room, a large conferences. We've also placed the jewelry room within this blue facility area, so that when there's not court, it can be used as a conference room for other departments. We have, um, the computer networking, and we also have some general support areas. We have a, a central copy area and mailroom, so that, uh, the departments can share some of the larger pieces of, of business...
What's HHB?
HHB.
Next to the jury conference?
That's, uh, that's HUB.
Oh, HUB?
That's the technology.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that, that's for the computer networking system, and we did have some input from the county network...
Yeah, well, that makes sense there, but I just didn't know what it stood for.
Um, let, let me just, Judge, real quickly, uh, the intent here was, was to give you more building for your dollar, and that's why we, we merged some of the functions of some of the rooms. As Carolyn mentioned, there's a, a dual purpose for your break room, uh, this, this area back here. There's a partitioning that they can break off, and they can be used as a training room for, for the Sheriff's Department when they need it. Uh, in the Sheriff's Department, so there's three offices, so for the sheriff, lieutenant, and sergeant, which came to be used as interview rooms, when, when there were, there's some sensitive cases that need to be dealt on, on a private, very private level, but there's also some interviewing that can be done elsewhere. Uh, so that, there was a lot of joining of the functions in some of these rooms that can be used. Likewise, with the, with the jury room and the conference room, when not in use, the jury room can be used as a conference room for, for either the departments, whether it's the tax department, the sheriff's department, or the, the JPs, they can have staff officers if they'd like to. So it was just trying to, because we know that the jury room's not going to be used seven days a week, you know, for the same function, so we just wanted to double, uh, give them double duty some of these rooms, so that you won't have to incur extra cost in building extra rooms, so just, you know, for the most part.
Okay, and, uh, the way that the different departments are located within the building is to give them, uh, access to the public and the public access to them, and also, um, in case of the Sheriff's Department, to give them a separate entrance, so that if they are bringing people in that are incarcerated or to be incarcerated or questioned, they are separated from the public. Uh, we have an area here in the back that's shown dotted, which at this point is called future offices, and, um, we think that would be a good, uh, alternate for construction to consider, because, uh, due to the, uh, the way the corridors are constructed are based on the fire codes, and in order to give the tax office and the JPs this, uh, access to the rest of the building, we have this singular corridor, and so this future space might be considered as a construction alternate. At this time, just to build out as a shell, we have, uh, the JP offices are, uh, exactly the same to provide each JP with the same quality of space and amount of space and the same access to the public. They have a back access to the courtroom that allows them to come and go without ever going into the public, and frankly, when the public comes into this lobby, past this door here and past the department doors, they never need to go anywhere else in the building. So they are in a secure area, which can be monitored by the Sheriff's Department, it can also be monitored by the constables. All of these departments, all, we would envision to have glass that looks out onto this lobby, so there's visual control and security for everyone in the building. Um, on the second page of the drawing is a conceptual site plan...
Before we get to that, can I ask about the size of the courtroom? Obviously, the area for the judges and where the, the jury and bailiffs and the, the opposing teams tables are, but the area where it appears you have a lot of audience?
Correct.
Is, does it need to be that size? I mean, I don't know how many, many people use the, attend a ju, a jury or a trial in a, in a JP's court.
We, we discussed this with, uh, the JPs, and this seats 40 in seats, and I guess if you had more than that, at some special occasion, you might fit, fit a few more in, but this is comfortable seating for you, and that was the number that was agreed to. Um, if that's not considered adequate, uh, if, if... If that's not considered adequate, it really is a mathematical.
Well, my question was if it's too large.
Well, let me just.
Forty people normally show up at a JP.
They did, they did some team courts that, as a matter of fact, they, they wanted 80.
Okay.
Originally, it was programmed as 80 for the participants.
They wanted 80.
And we've done sizes to have, and that's what the JPs, that was suffice. And at times, even with 40, they said they're going to be cramped in there, but it goes back to the issue, do you plan for that one time you're going to have 80 people, or do you plan for the fourth, or the maximum time line?
Just not aware of how many people normally attend a JP court. Yeah, their team courts are pretty busy, the team courts.
Just, and on that note, we started with a program actually pretty similar to what we ended up with. We went with all the departments and tried to get them to scale down to the absolute minimum. We looked at the building under those conditions, and it was felt that we would build it and we would already be outgrown, be outgrown by the time it was constructed. So we put back into flexibility and put back into growth, and this is, these are the numbers, and this is just a preliminary floor plan. And if we proceed, it will change a little bit, but in terms of the spaces and what's being provided, this would be reflective of the programs today. Are there any other questions?
That includes the drive-ins, right, for the tax office?
Yes.
If we have them.
If you look at the tax office here, right there, there's the area for two boards.
Okay.
And if you look at the site plan, they're located on the right-hand side.
Okay. But that aspect of it, if there's a canopy over, is going to be part of your plans?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. And the third page is the conceptual site plan. The NEANX building that's indicated here is slightly different than this one, because we have not updated the site plan, and we got some approval on this size building and this plan, but the concept remains the same. We would be entering and exiting off Wilson Road. We're separating the public parking, with sheriffs having a separate entrance on this side. The employee parking would be in the back, and they have a separate employee entrance that comes directly into the middle of the building, and they can navigate directions. And one of the things that's been requested by several of the departments is to have key cards or some kind of identification to provide security in that part of the building, and so this makes that a very simple matter. On the other side, as long as saying, we have a long drive area that allows for the stacking of cars for the drive-ups to the tax office. And in this, I believe that what we have decided along is that two drive-up lanes would be provided at this time and ensure that there is adequate room for further to be added at a later date.
The only comment that I would make is on the employee parking. If you have a future space allocation next to the mechanical area and the JP area there, that you might, on your plans, leave available space between the parking and the building already in case that would ever occur, instead of having to, at a later date, move your parking to accommodate that future build.
Absolutely, that's part of the plan.
Okay.
And one of the things about the way the building is my job is that when we construct the drive-up on this side of the building, because of the cost that's involved, the drive-up lanes with the equipment and the underground and the concrete and the canopy, expansion is why becomes pretty limited or becomes very expensive. Expansion towards the front, obviously, in the front of the building, anticipate that we would put an entry and give it some special architectural characteristics. Again, expansion in that direction is something we would want to look at in the immediate future. But the way that the corridors and the building construction is constructed, it allows us at a later date, if it becomes an issue, that you can expand in this direction, you can also expand in this direction. And all of the five corners will work, and it gives room for the departments to grow in the future. And so we've tried to build that into the building in anticipation that as you grow, you'll be able to accommodate that more.
And from a perspective of the departments, it appeared to us also that the sheriff's department, the tax office, would be the two departments most likely to grow in the immediate future as opposed to the JP's department. So having said that, with all the, just segue's into the issue of costs, and I don't know, we don't have a spreadsheet that to show you, but right now, we've been discussing with Remy and you, not just the issue of the costs. And right now, given, I don't know if you guys are aware, but the price of steel has gone up, the price of gas obviously has gone up, and we're being told right now that the price of concrete is just getting ready to skyrocket. I've been informed also by our social consultant that concrete is on allocation. Many of you already call somebody, say, "Any concrete?", and say, "Well, forget about this because there's a waiting list of your concrete." So the price of concrete's kind of off as well. We budget it for budgetary purposes only. This is not a construction cost system, this is just a budget treatment, this moment here. We've established about $135, but with the price of concrete going up, we're more comfortable, and we want to be upfront with you guys, telling you upfront right now, we're looking at $145, $150 a square foot.
But when you talk about $135, we were already talking about increased costs of steel and all those things, okay?
Right. At the $135.
You were already adding all those things.
If we were to start designing, actually building today, the $135 a square foot, we'd be comfortable with, but depending on how long we progress here and how it goes, we were just concerned, and again, we want to be free, we don't want us to fall in love with the building that we're telling us it's going to cost $135, come bidding time, we came in at $150. Now we have to find money elsewhere. We want to be upfront with you, and we're concerned in designing backwards, but we want to be upfront, we just want to lay it all to the table, and right now, we feel more comfortable telling you that $145, $150 is a more adequate budget treatment number, is for budgetary purposes. Once we, you give us a main line, we proceed, and we get a more precise drawing, we can do a more concise construction cost estimate that will give us a more, a number that we'll be more comfortable with and give you an actual dollar amount, so this is what we believe the construction cost is going to be. We can't do that as one because it's still very schematic, like we presented to you, and but right now, we just, we need to realize to proceed so we can give you some more hard numbers that we feel more confident with.
This number that you're throwing out right now, does that take into consideration any of the landscaping or parking and all that area?
That would be site work, that would be turnkey building.
Yes.
And I think that one of the points that we want to make is if the county has a budget, this is it no more, that we can design to meet that budget. We, you know, we're being asked for numbers, and right now, the construction industry is in a great deal of flux, and unfortunately, some of it is unpredictable, but we have been told outright that the price of concrete is fixing to increase considerably. And until it happens, we don't know exactly what it will be. The price of steel has continued to rise steadily in the past three years beyond anyone's expectation. The price of petroleum is having an impact on the delivery of everything in the manufacture of many architectural products.
If we have the cost of concrete, steel, gasoline, obviously, it's going up, by the time we build this, and it's going to be over our budget here, what can we exclude from there to meet the cost, you know? What would you suggest?
Well, one of the things I think that we would like to do to begin with is to establish a budget that the county is comfortable with. We feel, after working with the staff and the departments, that the square footage that we have, anything in here, is the correct square foot.
That it's, that's pretty much bare minimums compared to what the requests were, you know?
It doesn't mean that we're going to exclude anything.
No, but following on that, is based on the number of a budget, that would dictate the materials, the construction means and methodology that we would design around. You know, we would like to, you know, obviously have a huge budget and give you a fabulous building, but we understand that, you know, we have, like everyone, we have to be a budget. And whether it would be a pre-interior building, whether it would be a masonry building, whether we would have pavers, whether we would have, you know, there's many material choices and construction methods that we would look at in order to meet that budget. And what I think we would like to do, or what I would say, is right now, we have a schematic floor plan that represents your spatial requirements and the concepts about how to separate employees and public and all that. If we have a, if we can go forward with a budget that the county is comfortable with, then we could do more detailed cost estimates, and if we go along, we will have our engineers, and we will talk with contractors that we know in the area, and we will monitor the costs as we go along so that we don't end up six months from now with something that you can't afford. If we're over the budget, we need to make some trimming, we would at that time come to you with some recommendations, but we want to, we want to minimize that. We don't, you know, we would like to, if that was the catch, you know, 5% of it, about 20% of it. And so that's why, as we go along, we will do more detailed cost estimates and monitor if the construction costs, if they go up, and if we need to adjust, adjust while we're drawing, not at the end of the project.
Well, I can tell you, you've already created a situation where when Thursday, contractors see this, they've already moved their numbers from $135 to $150 when they get ready to bid. That's already been done. Because that's just kind of the way it works.
Well, the purpose of competitive bid proposal is really to do, to get rid of that, and when it's put out as a competitive bid proposal, it minimizes that, that they, I doubt that all of them will raise for $135 because they want the work.
I don't know where you live, but in the valley, that's not the way it works.
Well, again, we put out sort of documents, and we get, we have pre-bid conference, and we discuss issues, and then we have a competitive proposal, which is what we're doing here. But we're comfortable, but again, it just goes back to the thing, we want to be upfront with you and value to you. We know that the reality of construction costs are right now where they're going, and we don't want to be caught in the surprise here of what happened. That's what we try to avoid. We just want to be upfront with you.
Hang on, David.
I'm sorry?
Hang on.
I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, dear, I'm honored to acknowledge your report, presentation.
Well, we're still just in the middle.
I'm sorry.
You know, we got a long day.
Okay, what else we got now?
David Mendez, the Port Isabel ANX building and the Social Service building.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. We've met twice with all the departments, and I've got a floor plan that I'd like to show you. The lime green area, this would be the tax collector's area, that have vault area, this pink would be the mechanical room. All this lime green area here would be the commons area. The brown would be the judge's space, the teal would be the constable, and the brown would be the DPS, and the purple would be the probation office. We've met twice with each department, we've got one more meeting to go with. We're about 85% complete on this project, and we would like to bid this project maybe mid-August, present bids to you at the end of August, and go out for construction in September.
What's the square footage that you're looking?
5100 square feet.
5100. May I ask, would you pull out the other slide? The brown area, or tan, or that one? What's the square footage of that? Do you have it broken out?
No.
No?
It's got to be 1 square feet.
Okay. Looks more than that. You're looking at 5100 total, right? That's about a fourth of it.
Like the city right here, and then you've got the courtroom that will hold probably about 15, 15 people in that courtroom.
It's a little bit smaller than, okay, that's fine.
This, and this would be the elevation, the CMU would stop out, metal roof up front and then a filter.
And it'll be facing which direction?
This elevation would be facing Highway 100.
100. Oh, 100, that's right. So the people can walk into there?
Yes. And up front, we have a parking, parking for about 23 cars.
In the front? With the drive-through, coming off of 100.
The drive-through would be, in other words, this would be Highway 100, this would be the front of the building, this would be Highway 100. Then we'd have a drive-through for the tax collector, and they go out to the back alley beside, and exit on a champion. The exterior is just a.
How much stacking, how much stacking room do you have, do you think, you would be able to accomplish in the drive-through?
Four cars. About four cars.
Which is usually more than adequate, isn't that facility, yeah? And you've got a shoulder, you've got a shoulder there on Highway 100, right? Okay. What's your estimated cost per square foot? The other team is out.
The, this is 5100 square feet.
Right.
We're hoping it comes in between 850 and 900,000. So we're looking at, you know, a little 150 to maybe $170 a square foot. That would include the parking lot for 22 space, 23 spaces, and landscaping.
So it's more expensive per square foot, the smaller you get?
Yes.
And then you're also talking about building over there, Port Isabel, and that's a different.
I'm raising my eyebrows.
You're raising your eyebrows?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The Social Service.
The other project is the Social Service Center.
Yeah.
We just started construction on that one, we're probably about 12% complete on that project. They've already got the building pad in place, and they're preparing that for the concrete foundation. We're hoping to pour that in a couple of weeks, and once they finish that, they'll start laying block, and the roof truss will start going up.
Have we got the issue with the proctor and all taken care of on the?
Yes, I just got a phone call this morning from the testing lab. The moisture's fine, they want the, they want, they want to leave the visqueen over the pad for maybe a couple more days, and then after that, they're released, they're ready to go. So we, we've been in contact with the testing lab on that and the structural engineer.
The last time, I guess, I reported to y'all, the colors on this building, we had to change to this brick. It's a little lighter, but we can get this one in four weeks, it's taking 18 weeks to get this one, so we can go with maybe this.
You hadn't told us, we wouldn't know.
It's down at the bottom.
Okay. That is a metal roof, right?
No, this is a shingle.
Shingle?
Yes.
Not metal? You decided against the metal totally?
It's just a little expensive.
Okay.
What was the cost? Does the cost come in on this one?
A total of $1,005,000.
How many square feet?
17,000 square feet.
Which one?
Square foot?
Oh, that's, that's the Social Service. Yeah, but that's, we did that direct, the mail thing. Did it come out to a square foot?
Came out to less than 100, like 80, 80 something, like high 80s.
But remember, we're finishing out a big chunk of that.
Ninias will be finished out by the county.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody that did leave on building?
Mr. Santo Petro was not able to be here, but I did talk to him. He does have the plans complete. He has received the layout for the communication system from the computer center, and he's working with the computer center on a couple of technical issues. According to him, in the next three weeks, the communication layout will be incorporated with his plans, and he will be ready to bid the project in about three weeks. Marcelino, meanwhile, has begun to do the work on the record storage portion of the building, and he's probably about, you know, 70, 75% complete with that. So we're looking at about three more weeks by the time we go out to bid on this project. I did tell Mr. Santo Petro though, as soon as he could get down here, that he could come make a formal presentation to Commissioners' Court.
On the, on the storage stuff, is it going to be complete enough to start storing stuff?
Yes.
So we should start, where are we at on all these contracts? I mean, do we get to start moving stuff over? Do we know?
As far as the partitions on the storage space, we want to cover the inside part in order to leave it open, the other part of the wall for the future inspections. So the inside is going to be available for jail, so they can put cars in there. And on the vehicle maintenance facility, we're still working on that layout and And on the vehicle maintenance facility, we're still working on that layout and the cost estimate with Mr. Santo Petro. On that one, I would venture to say we probably need about another thirty, forty-five days to complete that.
To hurry up, cost of concrete's going up.
So we're, you know, not sure that we can let both the Levi's and the vehicle maintenance at the same time, but if we can, we will. On the vehicle maintenance, the parking and paving will be done in-house, you know, by county forces. So we'll, you know, save some on that. There might be some utilities that need to be extended to the facility, that probably would have to be part of the project, because we don't have the capability of doing that. But I will try and get Mr. Santo Petro as soon as he can get down here to, again, make a formal presentation of vehicle maintenance building. On the fancy building, the same thing, Mr. Reese could not be here, but I understand overall, on that project, we're about sixty-eight percent complete. We're trying to get Mr. Reese next Tuesday, so that, again, he can make a formal presentation to the court.
Frank is here, does he have any comments on that?
No.
No? None of the issues have been resolved that we were looking at as far as the parking?
Uh, that's still under discussion.
Still up for discussion.
We do need a tour pretty soon on that, Frank.
I agree.
Okay. Just, you know, maybe.
You are not on a Tuesday?
Next week. Yeah. Can we do it next week? I don't know what our schedule looks like. Well.
You got to move that.
Unless we move it, let's talk, we'll talk about it, okay? All right, is that it?
That's in August.
The here motion to acknowledge report?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Grasso, second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those affairs seen by by State and I, both motion carries, budget amendments, line item transfers, and board salary schedules, to have motion to approve.
Thummo.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it unless you have a comment. No?
Okay. In close discussion, all those affairs seen by by State and I, both motion carries, minutes, are we ready on the minutes?
I'm ready on the minutes, I just have one, one, on the minutes of April fifth, the regular meeting, page forty-two and forty-three, I don't believe belong in there, because they're totally unrelated to the landfill. So I will move if we exclude those two pages.
What are they?
It was an email from Remy in regards to legislation that had nothing to do with the landfill? Or an email to Remy? They were just kind of included, I gave you a big stack.
Is it personal?
And I might have given him, no, it's not personal, no. I might have given you those two pages, but I don't want them included. You know, I think you gave them to him, it was something totally different.
Okay, all right. I assume the motion to approve by Commissioner Grasso with those changes, is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those affairs seen by by State and I, both motion carries. Six, consideration, authorization to create position, secretary, secretary position for Constable Precinct Two. We had a secretary there at one time, I think it was funded through law enforcement, block grant funds. It's a large department, and they need some support staff. Constable Romanus has for some time been harping on this thing, and he finally, he finally submitted it. It's got a price tag from, to the end of the fiscal year for how much?
It's funded at seventeen-five, Judge, it's seven thousand five.
Well, that's not what we're talking about funding it at. You want to talk to us, Javier?
Well. I defer to the constable, his request was for twenty-four thousand.
Does that include fringes, or what?
No, I believe it's a salary.
Well, we've talked to the constable, and he's modified his request to, to level-two secretary slot that the JPs have, it's at seventeen-five.
We do have, two of the other constables, Precinct Six and Precinct Three, currently have part-time secretaries, and they're at a rate of seven fifty an hour, which is the fifteen-six.
This kind of needs a full-time person, though. He's got more work than.
You're not going to be able to get somebody that's full-time.
He's going twenty-four hours a night.
Does he have a half-time person right now?
No.
There's no position at all. They're, as the judge mentioned, last year.
Actually needs two employees, you know, at least. One or no, but because of.
So, I mean, I just, we just thought we need to put it in a category, at least of a level-two clerk, to be able to attract somebody that's going to be, you know, they have to help them fill out all the paperwork, I mean, they serve paperwork for all the JPs and some of the county court of law judge issues there, and just.
The return is much more than what we're paying out on this.
He needs someone like he's requesting, is what he needs.
Six months without having anyone there.
Well, but, well, can we just take one step at a time? And we've already got him to agree to the.
But I really get someone to do what you're talking about doing, and then, you know, really, really needing someone who can do more, unless you can train someone to do more, and then look at increasing the salary as it comes along, but whatever you think, Constable.
Well, I'd just like to add that the request for the salary was a little high, maybe for a secretary position, but I'd like you to consider that this is a position of somebody who's going to be running my office, or assisting me in running my office, and that he's going to be having access to privileged information. I need somebody that I can trust, that I can bring in, who's going to stick to my department. I think that if we bring him in at a real low salary, I'll just be hiring people that are going to come in and use my office as a stepping stone to maybe jump to other departments, and I'll probably spend more time trying to train these people and showing them what they need to do than, than.
Getting any benefit out of it.
Getting any benefit out of it.
And I think you're not really looking for a secretary position, you're really looking for an office administrator, someone who can actually operate the office and run it.
Yes.
How many constable deputies do you have?
I have five.
And yourself?
Yes, sir.
Well, but I mean, I think that it's just a question of degree in terms of the need of an office manager. We have seven constables, and if you, if you take, if you compute out.
Just multiply it by seven?
If you multiply that times seven, at a twenty-four thousand dollar a year salary with fringes, you're up to, close to thirty thousand, multiply that times seven, you're going to, and I promise you, the moment that we do start doing office managers, all of those six of them are going to come see us.
What we need to really do is look at, at the volume of work that all these have, and allocate the resources accordingly. You're going to find some that may only need part-time employees, or not even that. In addition to that, you know, it goes on to the JPs, everywhere else.
Constable, how have you been working it out for the past six months? I mean, what do you do? I know you have a lot of, a lot of work there. Are you kind of substituting the constables to take over the office?
I have, I've been trying to substitute the officers to work one hour, a couple hours in the office, especially in the mornings, it's my heaviest traffic, but it just doesn't work out that way. I have too many requests for assistance from other agencies with different operations and deals that are going on, so I just have, end up leaving my office alone, and I have had numerous complaints that there's nobody ever in my office, although I have my phone number, personal phone number posted on the front door, it just doesn't seem like it's enough. I really need somebody to help me track the work that we're doing, to be able to show the Commissioners' Court the efforts that we're, that we're doing, the work that we're producing, the money that's coming in. And I'm sure that Judge Tulos was nice enough to provide you with a list of the kind of work that he has. We service the two JPs, we assist the DA's office, we're working together with the sheriff's office, and there's other agencies, the probation department just approached me to assist them with a warrant task force that they'd like to just, and, and I have no problem working with all these agencies, I, you know, I'm all for it, but I do need a little help, especially in the office. That's why I'm here today.
Well, no, let's do this, let's start, my suggestion is, let's start with the local staff, and let's see how it works between now and the new fiscal year. There's only two, three, three months left, and at the end of the fiscal year, with, at the new budget cycle, we'll look at that slot, we'll see where we're at financially, and then we'll see what's going to happen with the other constables, too, and then we'll make a call as to whether we're going to convert it into an office manager, or maybe we can come up with a plan of who's going to need it, who's going to not need it, and then we'll be able to make a determination of whether or not we can afford to bid office manager slots in large constable departments. You've got large constable departments in Brownsville, in Los Fresnos, and now in Harlingen, and, and then you've got small constables, relatively small constables, in Port Isabel, Real Hondo, San Manito, and in, but small is a question of degree, right? You know, they've got, you've got, Constable Romanus has got three deputies, so that makes it four with his office. I know that Constable Ochoa is going to be asking for at least one more deputy because of the fact that he covers it by the way I want him now, so that's going to be, put him in a four office. Laferia, Constable Diaz has got three also, right? Or four?
He's got three.
Three, so that gives him four off, four constable office. Constable Lopez has got three also.
He has the same number of deputies as.
Yeah.
He's got five.
Same size as Constable Romanus, so, you know, I need to see where everybody's going to be at. This is a new thing, we've never, we've never, we've never funded an office manager in any of the JP slots or constable slots before, and, and I'd like to see how it's going to work in relation to all the constables' offices, and also look at the funding issues, to see where we're at. You know, I want to know what the legislature's going to do on these caps. I mean, if they're going to put caps on us, you know, you may be forced to choose between an additional constable and an office manager. You know, I mean, I don't know, those are decisions that are going to need to be made at some point. You may want to come back, you know, the caps are implemented, and say, you know what? I'd rather convert this to a, to a constable slot, you know, and I have them working out of the office, and give me the salary to hire a licensed peace officer. That may be something we may rather do down the line, but let's try this out, let's see where it takes us at the end of the fiscal, till the end, till the end of the fiscal year, and then we can make that call. And I, and I concur with you, Commissioners, that, you know, this constable office is extremely busy, has an enormous amount of activity, deserves much more staff than what they've got right now, and they're doing Romanus' work with what they got. But we just need to look at the big picture until we get a better indication of where we're at financially, once we start putting our fiscal year, new fiscal, two thousand and five, two thousand and six fiscal year budget. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the clerk, it's actually a clerical position for Constable Precinct Two, number two, at the seventeen thousand five hundred figure to the end of the fiscal.
That would be full-time.
Full-time.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
Yes, we need to know where the money's coming from. Of everything you said, Judge, I think the main thing I really agree with is, you did hit on, we need to figure out who's doing the amount of work and where they're doing it. Because I really do believe that's the way we need to start trying to allocate the assets.
Well, I think that we could not shortchange communities in, in available resources just because they're not as busy. Because I guarantee you, the folks in Port Isabel, the folks in San Manito, those folks in Los Fresnos, or any other office, you know, should have the same resources even though they're not as busy. We're talking about.
The ones you mentioned are the ones that are busy, though. There's some in other parts of the county that aren't here as busy, it's the ones you mentioned.
Even, even, even if, if those, you know, I mean, I don't think those smaller communities should be shortchanged as to what we provide for services for them, in a matter of public safety.
And I'll tell you this, I mean, I look at, I deal with all the constables in Cameron County on a weekly basis, and I, all I can tell you, Commissioner Wood, is that they're all real busy. I mean, whether it's, you know, Constable Precinct One, Constable from Real Hondo, they're all going, I mean, I, I was up to meet with Constable of Harlingen, and he's, and I had Judge Weiss come to me, and he says, these guys are running back and forth all day long, serving papers for me all day. So, you know, I've talked to Constable Diaz, I mean, he's got a huge area that he's got patrolled today. I know Constable Romanus has got his, he's even doing speed patrol as well, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's anybody less busy than anybody else today.
And maybe some of them are so busy, because it seems to me that I recall some JPs being in here saying they have hundreds, if not thousands, of warrants out that haven't been served. And, and, you know, the primary responsibility to the constables are to serve these types of warrants and things.
And Judge, why don't we just ask the constables to bring, if it's going to get to, and I agree with you, John, on that, because we have to see who's, who's doing a lot of work and who's not, and by bringing a report in, how many tickets you've given and things like that, we can tell right away. It's not, you don't need to be a rocket scientist.
They may be doing different types of work.
I definitely agree with that, and, and I've been working together with the JPs, trying to set up a warrant task force for the, all these pending citations that are out there. I've got a lot of ideas that I want to implement, I just don't have the manpower to run them.
And you're probably missing about half of it, for not being in your office, you know, you're out there working.
I know, I've got pending calls in my office as we speak, but we just get to them as we can.
So, you know, I've been here for about eight years, and every time the constables come in, we have the same product, and we don't deliver with them. We don't, we don't give them the help that they need.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I mean, okay, Judge, but not all the time, I mean.
When you're a clerk.
I know we have, and I'm not trying to throw rocks at you.
No, no, I know you're not throwing rocks.
I've been here almost as long as you have.
But wait a minute, Peter, let's be fair. When you came in, the constables didn't have vehicles? When you came in, the constables didn't have weapons?
Yeah, we brought the rifles and everything.
When you came in, the number of deputies were out there, that were there, were half the number that they've got now. When you came in, the salaries of deputy constables were way down there.
And I participated in that.
I know that, so, so, I mean, I don't think it's fair.
But, you know, I'm talking about secretarial work.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking for, you know?
We provided to offices secretarial work.
When the other constables able and all those guys.
And there, I agree with you, that we, they have, we have not met their needs on, in the secretarial area.
And I know that I couldn't operate without a secretary, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, we would like to thank you for all the things you have provided, they are very useful, we're using them to the max, we're trying to get the most we can out of it, and this is just one more tool, and I think that come October or September, when we have to show our numbers, as far as my new office is concerned, we will have numbers to show that, that are going to show an increase in productivity, an increase of money coming into the county, and I think that, you know, because I took it as a partial year, and I'm just getting started, I was spending a lot of time in training, because I'm a new constable, coming up in the next year, I think that the numbers are going to be very different, I think they're going to be very positive, and I think that you'll be impressed with the numbers that we're going to be showing.
Javier, where's the money coming from?
Depends on what we're talking about. Well, whoever, whatever we're talking about.
The, the only source of funds that I have available right now is lab salaries, but I am uncomfortable using it because of the utilities. The increase in utilities is specific to this facility here and the Daryl Histel Building in San Manito. We are currently within the budget process, and the department's submitting their requests, they're actually due this Friday. I would recommend, and it's not the, I believe the, he needs the help, and I know the other constables need help, but I would recommend that we address these issues during the budget process, because I know there's going to be a lot of requests by the other constables and handle it all at that time. I do have funds within lab salaries.
But we're talking about.
At the seventeen-five number, for, for the three months that are left, what's it going to be?
The thing is, lab salaries become salaries next year.
Correct.
Increased salaries, new positions.
Correct. That's in addition to the budget.
Right, that's.
For the total amount.
Yeah, but, come on, man, I don't think there's any question that he, he needs a clerk.
I'm not questioning that aspect, I'm looking at the money.
We need to find the funding for that, there's no question on that.
So how much is it to balance the year for seventeen-five?
It was seven, including benefits, because they would be entitled to benefits, health insurance, seven thousand five hundred dollars. That would be, depending when they're actually brought on. At this pay period, it was seven thousand.
For three months?
Because we still have eight, eight-point-one pay periods left, and it includes health insurance, retirement, work with comp, salary.
How can that be possible?
Because of the benefits.
A position like this is about forty percent of your salary. A position like this is about 40% of your salary.
Why would you pay all the benefits for the whole year?
No, that's for the remainder of the year.
For the remainder of the fiscal year?
Of the fiscal year, yes.
Well, that's only July, August, September.
Correct. But, but our, our, our salaries are paid on a 26.1 pay period. It's not, you know, two a month. And it's not paid by the month. So we have 8.1 pay periods left as of last payroll.
So we start on.
So it depends when they would actually start.
We start on July 1. What does it happen?
Now, because the pay period started last Friday. So if it starts to the following, so it'd be one less pay period.
7.1 pay period.
Yeah, 7.1 pay period. So like 5,000, I'm estimating.
Why don't we just do it effective July 1? You got to advertise for 10 days anyway.
It's going to take me approximately about two to three weeks to hire somebody. I got, I got to post it, and I got to take applications. So approval, it would take probably, I don't have time.
Do I hear a motion to approve a clerk two slot at 17.5, effective January 1, 2005, July 1, 2005?
January 1.
As a motion, my commissioner, granted second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. I.
I have a motion carries. Thank you. Judge, commissioners, thank you very much.
Keep up the good work, the constables. Seven, consideration and possible action regarding agreement for financial advisory service between Cameron County and Estalla and Hosa Company. Is that, is that part of the same resolution on, can we have a resolution on?
I think item nine is the next issue.
Next week.
Huh?
I think we're also on the, the agenda of item nine, I believe it is.
Nine.
Authorized in the publication.
Okay, consideration, okay. So which one of the two did we do first? The first one?
Yes.
All right. Do I hear a motion to, on seven, to approve the agreement with financial services, advice service between Cameron County, Estalla, and Hosa Company?
Javier, is this as presented to us last week?
Well, they've pitched pretty much the way they've been being.
The, the first item is, is about the contract. The contract that we currently have with you is expired. And we had submitted a, a draft contract through, I think, through Remy and through Mr. Yates, that basically had a three-year term and a nominal pay rate change. And I'm not sure if that was passed out previously or not.
Appendix A, was there a change from the previous one?
I have to defer to the auditor on the basis points on that. It is subject to legal review.
I'd just like to know what, if there were any significant change on of Appendix A?
Is Appendix A the fee schedule?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the, the last time we had a pay rate change was in 1997. And so this represents a approximately 15% pay fee change since then. Additionally, the, now I don't think that's an appendix A, but we have a term in there of, for the contract of three years. And I think historically, Estrada and Hosa has historically done contracts between three and five years with his clients. And I think with Cameron County, we have traditionally done contracts that have been kind of on a series by series basis.
Okay, but when you, you know, you have a base fee that's on there. And in relation to the base fee, there's also, for example, fees for advanced funding reissues, refunding issues. And there's, there's a base fee plus a 10% charge.
And so those, those are the same as they were before?
Those are the same as they were before. So the only thing that changed was a base fee structure?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go for a motion by Commissioner Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. I suppose motion carries. Nine, we'll skip eight. We'll come back to eight. Consideration and motion for resolution, authorization, publication, notice intention to issue certificates of obligation.
As you know, we're working on the, the refunding bonds and the road bonds. That sale will be next week. And this is for the certificate of obligation. It's that we have, we have a list of approximately $11 million worth of projects we want to do and fund with these certificates of obligation. To issue certificates of obligation, we have to obviously post notice of our intent to do that. And so that's what the, the resolution would be, passed today, would be to post notice of intent to, to issue those certificates. What I did was I, I passed out a, kind of a draft time schedule that we really need to address prior to adopting this resolution. Because what we need to do is we need to fill in the date when we would actually sell the certificates. If we look at the draft time schedule, we kind of start with, with the very last item there. We really need to address when you need the funds. What I've shown here is a schedule that, that would have the funds being delivered on September 8. And backing up from that, you would do the sale on, on August 9. But the sale date has to be at a regular meeting at a regularly scheduled time. And in terms of posting notice, we have to post notice the first time at a minimum of 14 days prior to the sale date. And the second time, a week after that.
Okay.
So if, if this time schedule meets with your approval, basically what we need to do is, is just change the resolution to say that we would sell the certificates on August 9 at the regular scheduled meeting at 9:30. And then if you move to do the, adopt the resolution, there's a date.
Unless the auditor, have you run over the schedule with Mark Yates at all?
I have not talked to Mark about the schedule, no.
When you close, it is deliver certificates and receive funds.
Do we need to sell all these funds?
That's why I'm asking whether or not Mark's been talked to, because I don't know that we need to.
I mean.
Receive the funds at this time?
Judge and commissioners, if you read through the, the notice to indicate which project we're talking about, I think based on some of the presentations you saw today, it starts off with the, the construction of the County Annex Building in Port Isabel, Texas, which Mr. Mendez had indicated was coming up pretty quickly. He was almost at a point where he could go to construction documents. Construction of the County Annex Building in Harlingen, thanks to their, just about to finish up their schematic.
Well, they said something about six months.
They would need 60 days, I think he said, to prepare the construction documents. And he had thought that he could go out for bids in, opening bids in September.
But he hasn't finalized the floor plans yet. The schematics.
The, the schematics that were presented to the court were based on the last round of meetings that, that we had with the departments and the sheriff. And so I'm pretty confident that the only individual that we really need to sit down and make sure the space works for is Justice, Judge Weiss. Just because he has been unable to attend the meetings we've had in the past, and we want to make sure that he's.
I got the impression the sheriff may want to have a little more input into it, but maybe I'm wrong.
The sheriff, I'm sure, when he sees what the, the expansions that have occurred at his office based on his last meeting with them, will find that, I would say, almost 99% of what he requested be placed into that space was included in the space. So I'm pretty confident that he's going to be happy with what he'll look at when we're able to show it to him. So essentially, he and they indicated that they could move in September. That's the County Annex Building in Harlingen. This is the construction of the County Annex Building in San Benito. Mr. Santa Petro was indicating that he was almost complete with the construction, I'm sorry, the, the design documents on that one as well. It's the construction of a county, I'm sorry, the renovation, equipment of the existing county warehouse and the vehicle and fleet maintenance building. That project, I think, is perhaps the one that is least advanced. But the schematics are almost complete from what I.
Information we've got with 30 to 45 days, you'll be ready to bid out.
Then that's probably in keeping with that. And the payment, the, the last one, I believe, is for the construction, renovation, equipment, and improvement to the dancing building, which is part of 1912 courthouse restoration project, which is the site work, the additional funding for the site work and the furniture that Mike Forbes needs to go out to bids pretty soon in order to have it equipped when it hits. And then the last one is the kind of server.
Yeah, let me just say this, too. And I didn't say it during the construction thing because I didn't think about it. The construction discussion, it's obviously important that we have input from all the departments, particularly the sheriff. Because, you know, there's some really difficult security issues that, that, that he's got to contend with in his office. And, and we are talking to him, and I know that he, he's going to be pleased with the proposed site plan he's going to have. But at some point, there's got to be closure on this. Because people keep coming back, and coming back, and coming back, and making suggestions. And, you know, nunca vamos acabar. We're never going to finish. I mean, we, we got to get this thing built, you know, and so.
It's been two years.
Yeah. And, and it just, it's time. And I'm saying, at a certain date, by a certain date, based upon these projections out there, that's it. You know, those are the plans. That's what we're going to go out to bids on. Because we cannot be in a situation where we've got money sitting in the bank, and we're paying interest on that money, and we're not building anything. We need to do.
I don't think that's a job that's, we don't want money sitting in the bank.
Yeah. So, so let's just get, make sure that on all these, on all these specifications, you know, we get them finalized. Yeah. If we, if people are not pleased, but, you know, we've decided as a committee, and, and that we can't go any further. If there's any disagreement, come to us. Let's get it out of the way, finalize it. Yeah. We've got to do this because it's going to take forever. You know, one thing that, for example, we've made changes one time, which is in the Port Isabel Building, and that was it. And everybody's happy, and they're ready to go. We've had so many problems with.
It's been a little harder in Harlingen.
In Harlingen, that, that we just never have been able to get that thing finalized. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution, authorization, publication, notice intention to issue certificates of obligation?
I so moved, Judge, but with the reservation that we, we need to move on these projects quickly. One of the temptations is money sitting in the bank tends to disappear around here.
Yeah.
And.
It disappeared to other projects.
I don't mean in a bad way. I don't, I don't mean lost or stolen. I just mean that all of a sudden, a funded project gets unfunded because the need is greater so that we can stop a hole that's leaking water or something, you know? And, you know, we've been through that now for five years that I've been here. So if we're going to be doing this, I don't want to come back in three months and say, we're going to republish the notice of intent on our certificates, because we're going to shift money to do this other project, you know? I mean, I, I will, to date, say that I will not support doing that on this issue. We've already done it enough. We need to hold our guns to what we're going to do. We promised the community that we're going to go in debt to do these things that are listed on this intention, and I think we need to do those. And, you know, and I move that we go ahead and approve them with that reservation.
I'll second that.
The one modification, of course, again, we would need to make to what was drafted is that we would need to set the sale date to August 9, if that makes sense.
That's fine. That's fine.
Let me just clarify what your motion is. Your motion is to approve the resolution. It's not that, it's not that we're not going to deviate it all from, well, I mean, I don't think we could do that, and I, and I can't support that.
Well, it's just my thoughts, Judge.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm just.
Things happen. I mean, who would have known that we would have had these problems at the, at DC1 and DC2, and now, so I agree with you. I agree with you in the, in principle. I just, things happen, and I just don't know what, what to tell you.
I just don't want them to continue into happening.
I really think we've done the best we could with what we've had. And things have happened. We, we're, I think, probably pretty lucky that we did have some funding available in some places to be able to take care of.
To do what we get, yeah.
To get it done.
Generated enormous amount of money for the county as a result of that.
And to get back on track with these other projects that have been hanging out there for a long time.
If you ask, if you ask Javier what financial position we are today as a result of having 200 and, 360 or some odd, how many inmates do we have? Federal inmates?
Federal?
390?
380.
Well, 380 inmates.
The chief has a check today for $370,000 for the month of March.
I mean, you know, compared to what we worked before, that, that would not have happened had we not diverted funds that were up for these other projects to DC1 and DC2.
We used them appropriately.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't say that we're misused.
Time to get on with the program.
Yeah. We need to just get on with what we say our intent is.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. I suppose motion carries. Ten, consideration and possible action regarding the proposed development. Well, going back to eight, consideration, authorization to execute the landlord mortgage waiver with Alfonso Salasat, DBA, Sea Ranch Grocery and Tackle.
Judge, can we table this one?
Motion to table, Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I.
Aye.
I suppose motion carries. Ten, consideration, possible action regarding the proposed development of solid waste management facility in Cameron County. I don't think we have anything on this item, right? You know, I, I already reported that we, we had the committee meeting. Is there any action that we need to take on this thing?
No, it was just to give you an opportunity to report that.
Okay.
Table.
And by the way, we have the lower revenue development conference meeting at 1:30 on Thursday, where the item will be taken up by the full board.
Of this week.
Of this week, so.
Table which one is?
Yes.
Second.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. I suppose motion carries. Consent items, items 11 through 22, and travel item, item number 23.
Judge, on item number 11, I do have an additional claim for Cubco Construction, contractor doing the work at the Cameron Park Colonia Project. Invoice is approximately about $315,000. $250,000 is from Tech Dot for the paving portion, and about $65,000 from PUB for the utility relocation. We have received the $250,000 from Tech Dot, and we have that. We've invoiced PUB. We haven't gotten paid for their portion. I talked to Martha, and I also spoke to Mark Yates. And Mark said that if the court gave him authority upon the auditor's review and final approval of the invoice, he could release the check. So that's, you know, that's, that's before you.
So before receiving the PUB money? Is that what you're saying? I mean, is.
Or release a portion that we already have. We've got $250,000, which is a major portion.
Yeah, but the person that belongs to PUB is their work, right?
Yes.
It's paid through us.
Right.
And what's our agreement with capital? Do we pay it before we get paid?
We can pay it before, and we have a reimbursement agreement with the PUB. If we have the working capital, you know, we can probably pay it.
Yeah, but if this continue, this occurs this time, it's going to continue occurring for the length of the project, right?
Well, I think the first invoice is, is the hardest one. And I think we got Tech Dot, you know, we've had their money.
The most difficult one to work through.
Yeah. So I think the, the second, you know, by the third invoice, you know, we should have a site.
They're moving along pretty, pretty well. We've got some good projects.
I know we're in for some of it.
I know. It's going to be done.
Okay. All right. With that.
I'm sorry. Item number 21, on the evaluation committee for the independent auditor, the district attorney, and I'm sure the sheriff's office would, would ask that they be allowed to appoint a designated from their office to participate in those reviews.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Do we only have four people in that committee? Don't we normally suggest an odd number?
It's, the, the membership that is listed out there is the composition of the audit committee. There are five individuals that are listed there.
Five, okay. One, two, three, four. Well, I missed Remy, I guess.
All right.
On the, on the list of claims, I have three checks that I need to read in. One of them is check number 139858 to DPS for $300, and 139859 also to DPS for $500. The other check is check number 140312 to El Habin Water Supply. That's for $11,601. We're adding those.
Motion to.
Do you want a clarification on what we're adding for the first draw from Cubco for the total amount of the invoices?
I think Pete has already mentioned the amount of the invoice from Cubco. He spoke to Mark about it earlier. And Mark said that based upon our review of the claim, that we would go ahead and cut the check. And then it would be up to the treasurer to, to release it.
Treasurer have a problem releasing it?
PUB, you have the cover on PUB?
So the recommendation is to pay the whole bill, Pete? Is that what you're recommending to us?
Yes. If we have the working capital to do that, yes.
You have the money from Tech Dot already.
Yeah.
And you've built the other portion.
Yeah.
And the treasurer's willing to release it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Right. There's a motion to approve as recommended. They're second by Commissioner Wood. And this is all the consent items and the travel items.
Yes.
Any further discussions? All those in favor, signal by state and I.
Aye.
I suppose motion carries. And we have any supplemental items?
I have an abstention on warrant 00140192. I turn it to you.
Huh? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood. Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I.
Aye.
I suppose motion carries.